Called the meeting to order Legislative Session 2017-17 for Wycomico County Council. That's July 5th, 2017. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and pledge allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy name is holy, and thou shalt not speak of it in thy name. Thy verses say that thou shalt not speak of it in thy name. Thou shalt not speak of it in thy name, and thou shalt not speak of it in thy name. For thou shalt not speak of it in thy name, for thou shalt not speak of it in thy name. The power and the glory forever and ever. For thee is the truth, to you the life, of the United States of America, and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrested, and indelible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the legislative minutes from June 20th, 2017. So move. Second? Yes, second. Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor of legislation minutes from June 20th, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the special legislative minutes from June 12th, 2017. So move. Second? Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the special legislative minutes from June 12th, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the work session minutes in regard to the County Fire Services Commission from June 6th, 2017. So move. Second? Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion is carried, minutes are approved. First item, or second item we have on the agenda is we have some very special people here who have been with the Board of Education for many years, and we would like to, if we could, present them with certificates of appreciation. I'm going to be going over to the podium here, and if you would like to join me, I would appreciate that. That would be Mr. Ron Willie, Dr. Margot Handy, and Dr. Kathy Townsend. These are individuals that have meant so much to this community and education as a whole, and as such, due to their retirement, we thought that the least we could do would give them a certificate of appreciation. And that being done, I'll begin here with Mr. Ron Willie. And if you really knew what each of these individuals did as a lifetime of service, this is about a two-minute synopsis of about so many years of life, so... And it reads as such, "Certificate of Appreciation: Whereas Mr. Ronald O. Willie was appointed to the Wycomico County Board of Education in July of 2007, and reappointed in August 2012, and has served as Board President from July 2011 through 2015; and whereas Mr. Ronald O. Willie is a former teacher and principal, having retired in 2006 after forty-four years of service in the Wycomico County Public School System; and whereas his contribution to the betterment of Wycomico County and his dedication, diligence, and special commitment to the Wycomico County Board of Education is truly valued and appreciated; and whereas his many years of loyal, faithful, and distinguished services recognize as having earned the honor and right to official recognition, now therefore the Wycomico County Council and County Executive recognize and honor Mr. Ronald O. Willie for his dedicated service as a member of the Wycomico County Board of Education done this fifth day of July 2017." So, congratulations. We appreciate it.
I just want to say to all the members of the council, one of the things that has impressed me over the years that I've served at the board has been the dedication, the commitment. I've grown in my appreciation for the job that you all do. No one in our community, or most people in our community, fail to realize the time, the effort, the commitment you make when you agree to serve in the positions you hold. And I just want to say to each of you, I know your job is certainly a challenging one, particularly at budget time, but I want you to know I do appreciate the years I've been on the board, the work that you have done, and my level of appreciation has grown tremendously having worked more closely with all of you. So thank you so much for the work you have done, and thank you for this recognition tonight.
Thank you. You know, I have to tell you, Mr. Willie, I honestly thought you were getting ready to tell us how important it was to increase the funding for next year.
I do believe that.
First thing hit my mind. Next, we have Dr. Handy. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
This proclamation reads, "Whereas Dr. Margot T. Handy is an instructional leader, relationship builder, and administrative leader, and whereas during a more than thirty-eight year career in education, Dr. Margot T. Handy served as a teacher, vice-principal, and principal of the Baltimore County School System from 1979 to 1994. She was hired in 1994 by the Wycomico County Public School System and served as principal of Prince Street Elementary School from 1994 to 2000, and Pemberton Elementary School from 2000 to 2002, before moving to the central office. Dr. Handy served the entire school system as supervisor of English for Speakers of Other Languages Program and Education that is multicultural." That's from 2002 to 2004. She served as Director of Elementary Education from 2004 to 2009. Dr. Handy served as Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Student and Family Services from 2009 to 2016, and Assistant Superintendent for Instruction from 2016 to 2017." Okay. Say your prayer. "Whereas Dr. Margot T. Handy has committed her life to assisting and guiding children and adults to be the very best they can be for themselves and others, she is respected by those with whom she worked and has always shown commendable dedication to her profession. Whereas Dr. Margot T. Handy worked many long hours, often sacrificing personally for the good of others, during difficult times she always retained her integrity in being fair and encouraging others to do the right thing. Her motto, 'It is never wrong to do the right thing.'" Very good. "Now therefore the Wycomico County Council and County Executive recognize and honor Dr. Margot T. Handy for her leadership, trust, dedicated service, professionalism, good judgment, and fairness, and wish her a happy, healthy, and restful retirement, done this fifth day of July 2017." Thank you so much. Incredible.
I would also like to take this opportunity to thank all of the members, of course, of the county council, county executive as well, but most importantly, I would like to thank the current superintendent and previous superintendent, as well as members of the Boards of Education, for this wonderful opportunity to serve the students, their families, the staff, and the community in Wycomico County. It has been truly my honor to do what is right, to do what is best, to excel education in Wycomico County. I ask that we all place a number-one priority on education so that our students will excel and our community will be better off. Thank you again. I also respect the work that each of you do, not only at the county council and county executive level, but also in the community. Thank you, and I do look forward to the wonderful abundance of money that you will be sending to education. Thank you.
Thanks. Dr. Townsend, good evening, how are you? Glad you could be here.
Thank you.
This proclamation reads, "Whereas Dr. Kathy J. Townsend, Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services, has worked for the Wycomico County Public Schools for thirty-four years, and whereas during a thirty-eight-year career in education, Dr. Kathy J. Townsend served as a teacher, and assistant principal, director of special education, supervisor of safe schools, and assistant superintendent. And whereas Dr. Kathy J. Townsend joined Wycomico County Schools in 1983, serving our children and their families in various capacities, she began her education career as a mathematics teacher in Worcester County Public Schools from 1979 to 1981. She started serving the Wycomico Schools as a math teacher at Wycomico Senior High School from 1983 to 1985. She then served as regulatory analyst for Downs Associates Engineering Consultants in Salisbury from 85 to 92. Dr. Townsend returned to education in Wycomico County as a math teacher in North Salisbury Elementary Magnet Program from 92 to 97. Her career in education administration began with her appointment to serve as assistant principal of Pittsville Elementary and Middle School from 97 to 99. She also served as assistant principal and principal of Salisbury Middle School from 99 to 2006, and as principal of Delmar Middle and Senior High School from 2006 to 2009. In more recent years, she served as Director of Special Education, Supervisor of Safe Schools 2010 to 2012, and Assistant Superintendent for Administrative Services. And whereas Dr. Kathy J. Townsend has earned the respect and esteem of those with whom she worked and always managed to maintain a sense of fairness, to encourage others, and has always shown the highest level of leadership and professionalism, now therefore the Wycomico County Council and County Executive recognize and honor Dr. Kathy J. Townsend for her leadership, dedicated service, professionalism, good judgment, and fairness, and wish her a happy, healthful, and restful retirement, done this fifth day of July 2017." Thank you very much.
Thank you. It has certainly been an honor to work in the Board of Education and to work with so many different groups of people, the county council, the county executive in his office, the Chamber of Commerce. Hopefully, over the years, all of us have made a difference in the lives of the children and the families in our community, because that's what it's all about, ensuring that our students get a good education in Wycomico County, and that they move forward into successful careers and life in general. So thank you for the opportunity and the privilege of working with each and every one of you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Taylor, how are you?
Good evening. Two bills for public hearing this evening. They both have a bit in common. They are both to create new pay grade classifications, as I understand it, for positions that were created in the budget for FY18, the new budget. So in a sense, they're housekeeping bills. They were both introduced on June 6th, and each bill is not to be codified in the Wycomico County Code. The first bill is 2017-08, An Act to Amend the Wycomico County Classification and Pay Plan by the Addition of a Certain Job Classification in the Department of Public Works and Establishing a Certain Class Title and Grade. Happens to be an Administrative Office Associate, Position One, and that's grade sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. As Mr. Taylor said, the legislative bill 2017-08 is up for public hearing. If you would like to make any comments in relation to this legislative bill, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, please, and what your concerns might Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on legislative bill 2017-08. Entertain a motion from council to approve legislative bill number 2017-08. So move. Second? Discussion? Seeing none. My roll call, all those in favor, starting with Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Vice President Dodd?
Aye.
Councilman Joe Holloway?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Matt Holloway?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill 2017-08 is approved unanimously.
Next is Bill Number 2017-09, An Act to Amend the Wycomico County Classification and Pay Plan by the Addition of a Certain Job Classification in the Department of Information Technology and Establishing a Certain Class Title and Grade. That is also Admin Office Associate, One, Pay Grade Sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Now open the floor for public hearing on legislative bill 2017-09. If you have any concerns, please come to the podium, please state your name and your address and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing for legislative bill 2017-09. Entertain a motion from council to approve legislative bill 2017-09. So move. Second? Any discussion? Seeing none. At this time, we'll begin with Councilman Matt Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Joe Holloway?
Aye.
Vice President Dodd?
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Legislative Bill 2017-09 passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Good evening, Mrs. Hurley, how are you?
Good evening, Council President, county council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first resolution we have on the agenda this evening is Resolution Number 93, 2017, Accepting the Forensic Investigative Report dated May the 11th, 2017, pertaining to a potentially fraudulent document. And we have Mr. James J. Kern here to go over the report.
How are you, Mr. Kern? Good evening. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution Number 93, 2017. So move. Second? Discussion? Thank you.
Mr. President, before we start, I'd like to make a motion to move to present Resolution Number 93, 2017, in a closed session on the basis that it is a personnel issue and should be held in a closed session.
There's a motion on the floor to move the Resolution 93, 2017, from current agenda and open legislative session to closed session. Is there a second? No second motion fails. Thank you, Councilman Hall. Mr. Kern, good evening, how are you? Try one more time. We appreciate you taking your time to be here tonight.
You're very welcome.
Because we know you are on vacation, if we can let that out publicly. I assumed that was okay.
Yes.
If you could, just give us a brief overview for council.
Yes, thank you for your time this evening. To introduce myself, James Kern, I'm a Certified Public Accountant and a Certified Fraud Examiner. Have approximately thirty-five-plus years of experience doing this. I was retained by the county council to perform a forensic accounting investigation of a document that was contained in a county employee's personnel file, which came to the attention of the county's external audit firm during the course of one of their annual audits. That county employee whose file, personnel file this document was contained within is a director within the county. The subject document is a letter dated November 19th, 2015, identified as being from the Director of Finance, addressed to the county executive. The letter provided salary ranges for individuals at other organizations with the same job title as the county employee. It identified a percentage of salary increase warranted for that employee. The letter contained handwritten notes of a salary increase given to that employee, and the signature of the county executive indicating his approval of the increase. So why was an investigation needed? An investigation was needed because the external audit firm deemed the document to be suspicious. The reasons the document was deemed to be suspicious were, first, the letter was not on county letterhead. It was simply a typed letter with a name and the title Director of Finance at the top of the letter. Second, the letter was not signed. The closing of the letter contained typed names of the Director of Finance and another county employee, followed by italicized font of their names, which gave the appearance of a signature, but no actual signature. The typed name of the Director of Finance did not include a middle initial, and typically that person always includes the middle initial. These are red flag indicators of a potential fraudulent document. The external auditors showed that letter to the county executive, and he told them that he had made the handwritten notes on the letter, and he had revised the percentage increase to a lower percentage than what was stated within the letter, and that he signed under those notations approving the salary increase. The external auditors also showed that letter to the Director of Finance. The Director of Finance had no knowledge of the letter, stated that the Director had not written the letter, and did not have anything to do with the creation of that letter. The Director of Finance then sent a letter dated November 4th, 2016, to the external audit firm with a copy to the county executive and the county attorney regarding that letter, stating, "I did not write this letter," and stating no knowledge as to the salary information, salary ranges, and percentage increase that were stated in the letter. The Director of Finance expressed an extreme concern as to what other documents may have been written and signed representing the Wycomico County Director of Finance without the Director's knowledge, stating that this is a very serious matter that needs to be addressed. The external auditors brought this to the attention of the county's internal auditor, the issue of the November 19th, 2015 salary increase letter, as well as the November 4th, 2016 letter from the Director of Finance. So that was why an investigation was felt to be necessary. So the investigation that I performed began with meeting with the external audit firm and obtaining an understanding of the information that they had gathered and their observations, which caused them to question the document and to deem it suspicious. I also spoke with the Director of Finance, obtained information as to discussions pertaining to a potential salary increase for the employee who was the subject of the November 2015 letter, and confirmed that the Director of Finance had not requested that anyone gather the salary information that was set forth in that letter, and had not requested anyone to prepare that letter. The November 19th, 2015 letter sign-off included the Director of Finance name and the name of another county employee. The county's internal auditor and I began interviewing that county employee to gather factual information as to that letter. But shortly after beginning the interview, the employee called the department supervisor into the interview. The department supervisor came to the employee's office accompanied by the county executive. After asking a few questions, the county executive told us that he was ending the meeting and that no one would be answering any more questions without an attorney. The county's internal auditor and I made several subsequent attempts to obtain cooperation to resume interviews of certain county employees who may have information and knowledge pertaining to that letter. On April 7th, 2017, a meeting was held with the county attorney and the county executive, and I participated in that meeting by telephone. And during that meeting, I explained the purpose of the investigation and the seriousness of potential fraudulent acts by county employees. I identified the county employees that I would like to interview as part of that investigation. County attorney indicated that the interviews can take place provided the certain conditions would be met, and I agreed to comply with those conditions. On April 19th, 2017, the county attorney sent an email to me stating that, or actually, I believe the email was sent to the internal auditor, stating that the county executive had directed that county employees not participate in such interviews. On April 21st, 2017, I received the letter from the county executive stating that he is not going to allow staff to be interviewed at this time. Since we were not allowed to conduct the interviews needed to gather factual information as to the creation of the letter, our investigation could not be completed. So to summarize, the need for a forensic investigation to gather all relevant information as to the letter is based on red flag indicators that the November 19th, 2015 letter is suspicious and potentially fraudulent. The Director of Finance stated in a letter that the Director had no knowledge of the November 19th, 2015 letter, or any of the information set forth in that letter. The November 19th, 2015 letter was used to support a pay increase for a county employee who is a director. And lastly, conflicting statements have been made involving two high-ranking county directors. Interviews of all parties having knowledge with respect to the creation of that letter, including the county executive, are needed to obtain sufficient factual information to evaluate how that letter came to be created and whether there was an intent to deceive associated with the creation of that letter. The factual information we seek to obtain through such interviews includes information as to the creation of the letter, such as discussions leading up to its creation, who requested the document be created, who actually created the document, how and by whom the information set forth in that letter was gathered, and whether there's documentation of such information. Also, steps taken after creation of the letter to obtain the approval and the authorization of the Director of Finance, who was purported to have been the one who issued the letter. And lastly, the process undertaken to present the letter to the county executive and any discussions held in connection with the county executive's approval of the pay rates. County executive has taken the position that the salary increase that resulted from, or at the very least was supported by the November 19th, 2015 letter, was authorized by him and is a personnel matter, advising us that he is not going to authorize county employees to be interviewed, thereby precluding us from completing the forensic investigation. Whether the salary increase was warranted, appropriate, and approved by the county executive is not the issue to be investigated. The focus of the investigation is on the potential fraudulent document that was provided to the county executive to support the pay increase. Although we have been precluded from conducting the interviews necessary to complete the investigation, the documents and information obtained to date indicate that the letter was made to appear as though it was from the county's Director of Finance.
Water.
Let me get some water, yes. My mouth is getting awful dry. Thank you very much. Okay, let me start that last section over. Although we have been precluded from conducting the interviews necessary to complete the investigation, the documents and information obtained to date indicate that the November 19th, 2015 letter was made to appear as though it was a letter from the county's Director of Finance, providing information in support of a pay increase for a county director. But according to the Director of Finance, that letter was not prepared by the Director of Finance, and the Director of Finance did not request such a letter be prepared and did not authorize the letter. Thank you for your time, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmembers?
You've been doing this, you said, thirty-five years?
Something like that.
Yes, sir.
Is this something that happens a lot? I mean, with folks that won't cooperate with interviews?
Not, in my experience, no. My experience has been in performing these types of investigations that I usually do obtain cooperation from management, from the administration, in order to conduct the interviews that are necessary to obtain factual information to come to a conclusion in this type of investigation.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 93, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion is carried, resolution passes. Mr. Kern, thank you again. Thank you very much for being here.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 94, 2017, authorizing the county executive to accept a capital project grant award from the State of Maryland Board of Public Works, which is to be administered by the Maryland Department of General Services in an amount not to exceed $500,000, to be used for various infrastructure improvements to the Arthur Purdue Stadium. And we have Mr. Steve Miller, Director of Recreation Parks and Tourism, as well as Mr. Chris Bitters, General Manager for the Delmar for Shorebirds here.
Gentlemen, entertain a motion to approve Resolution 94, 2017. So move. Second? Thank you. Mr. Miller, how are you, sir?
Very well.
If you gentlemen... If you gentlemen, I know she stated, if you could, for the audience, state who you are.
Sure. Steve Miller, Director of Recreation Parks and Tourism for Wacomiko County.
Chris Bitters, General Manager for the Delmar of Shorebirds.
You had fireworks last night, right?
We did, we did.
Good attendance?
Great attendance, packed house, and couldn't pull off a win, but I think everybody left pretty happy with a nice firework show.
Sold out, was it?
It was sold out. It was very neat to see the new seats, particularly on the second level, and being able to have people arrive at the ballpark that they're choosing to sit in the seat they purchased
Oh, yeah.
in advance versus needing to be there when gates open to secure a seat with the old system. So it was great.
Yeah, I love the new seats. Been there a couple times, really, really enjoy that new, because like you say, you can, you know exactly where you're going to sit when you walk in.
Exactly, it's been a big improvement that many, many comments, not only on the fan comfort side of things, but the improved professionalism look of the stadium as well.
Right. Steve, where you gonna start?
Yeah, so the matter at hand, we're, we're looking to accept funding in the amount of $500,000 from the State of Maryland. This is part of the, the lease agreement where the state committed a certain amount of funds, so this would be the next installment of that. We expect one more in the next fiscal year, but this was, for FY '18, the $500,000. So there was clerical oversight, which is why it didn't get in the CIP, so that's why we're here tonight. But this is just to continue on with the, the improvements that we've started in Phase Two and then moving on into Phase Three. Okay?
My question is, so this, how much is this state supposed to give us? How much have they given us? And can you break that down?
The total is just over $2 million. I think it's $2,250,000. So heading into this year, we, we were $980,000 short. We had requested the full amount, but we got $500. So our, our hope and expectation is that next year we would complete that amount.
So we have another $980,000?
That was total, this, this $500 is part of that.
Okay, so $400.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay. Seeing no questions, all those in favor of Resolution 94, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Rosa, how are you?
Good evening, thank you, Mr. President. I call your attention to Resolution 95, 217, accepting the payroll audit.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 95, 2017. Second. Discussion.
If I may.
Thank you.
We performed an audit of selected payroll and HR functions. Objectives were to determine the existence of internal controls and adherence to internal controls for selected processes. The scope was calendar year 2015. At the time, payroll was just over $30 million in payments to 1,192 full and part-time individuals. We assessed the established administration oversight controls in place as adequate. We assessed adherence to controls for salary levels and pay increases as inadequate. Findings indicate significant control weaknesses that, in the auditor's opinion, require remedial action. The established electronic personnel notification system showed a compliance rate of only 71% on the administration level for the sample tested. Other substituted approval methods offer much less control. Additionally, we discovered another 48 wage increases outside the sample with no electronic approval. Secondly, financial controls over payroll were determined inadequate. Financial oversight to the payroll process is minimal and consists of making journal entries and electronic transfers. Additionally, finance performs bank reconciliations. The individuals responsible for changing payee information and salary levels are in direct control of creation of payments to those individuals, including control of checks and debit cards. The current system as described contains high-risk levels for misstatements and fraud. Thirdly, we tested the timekeeper system for accuracy. Testing included the calculation of management override, reducing punch data in excess of 14 minutes per occurrence. Aggregate decrease to employees' time for the period was in excess of 372 hours for a large number of employees. We expanded the scope to include the GOB for the first six months of 2016 and found a decrease of 509 hours for that sample using the same criteria. Management found it necessary to engage an outside accounting firm to calculate the accounting liability as a result of this practice. HR management responded and disagrees with all three of these findings. This, from the auditor's perspective, is cause for additional concern. Management comments are included verbatim in the audit report, and I will be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Rosa. Questions from counsel?
I guess I have one. Have you done one of these audit reports on payroll before?
This is the first. We did an audit on the timekeeper system when it was first being implemented quite some time ago, but never on payroll.
You've never done an audit, payroll audit. Okay, anybody else? I think I've got another one, but I want to think about it in a minute.
Mr. Rosa, where, what is your recommendation from here?
The recommendation is to take a look at, maybe meet with management, take a look at best practices for payroll, try to reach, reach an agreement. I looked at some best practices that were contained in some of the information available in various HR publications, and there are a lot of private sector firms where payroll is in HR, and, and for certain firms, it works. About 40% in the sample that I looked at. Another 40% has payroll in finance, which we had at one time. At some point, I suppose it was moved to HR. But according to one publication, HR should not be able to enter hours and payroll should not be able to change a pay rate. HR should not be responsible for calculating overtime, and payroll should not be involved in determining who is eligible for overtime. I looked at other counties in, in the state, and actually, I have this for your review, is Charles County is looking for a payroll manager. Now, this, this particular payroll manager answers to the finance director, but I think in a perfect world, and again, I don't know if this is possible in our situation or not, payroll is, is a separate entity unto itself with oversight from both HR and finance. Finance is the money, is debits and credits, and payroll is heavily involved in that. And then, on the other hand, someone has to tell payroll how much to pay these people and who they are and other things that are within the realm of the Human Resources Director. So in a perfect world, and we don't have a perfect world, understanding that, perhaps we may want to, as a county, look at a separate payroll function that, that is answerable to both HR and, and finance in a major way.
Yeah, I got it. You said this may have been moved to finance at some ti, or HR at some time?
That's my understanding.
How long has it been operating like this?
I'm going to ask Laura, maybe she remembers. It was before my time.
It's my understanding it was around 2007, 2008, it was moved to HR.
From where?
From finance.
From finance, okay. So you're suggesting maybe that it should go back to finance?
In some fashion. It's, it's just important, I think, from an internal auditing and from an internal control perspective, to have someone other than the people responsible for setting the rates of pay and adding and removing the payees, separate that process from writing the checks.
Well, I guess the thing to do would be discuss that with the finance director and the HR director at some point in time. I don't know whether, I was at the County Executive's office, so.
Be happy to do that anytime.
Any other questions? In your discussions, are your discussions involved with just the directors, or was administration also involved in some of these discussions?
This dates back to December. For different reasons, we're just now releasing the audit report. I believe most of my conversations were with HR and payroll.
All those in favor of Resolution 95, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Rosa.
That's all I have, thank you.
This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you've had any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name and your concerns. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President. Corey Pollard, right on Colony Drive, Chief State 13. I just come here tonight just to, well, for liberties, it's just a copy from Maryland State Farmers Association, showing our letter that we're in good standing with them. I apologize, I don't have 10 copies, I resolved that, I got eight, though. We'll just have to choose, we'll skip a couple, who didn't pay their bills. Other than that, I'd invite everybody to come out Friday or Saturday to our chicken barbecue there on Snow Hill Road, come meet some of our members. If you haven't had a chance to meet them, they'd be delighted to have you out there and try some of our chicken we'll be cooking up for our fundraising. So, thank you.
Where, where on Snow Hill Road?
800 Snow Hill Road.
800.
Yes, sir.
You've got free advertising here on the.
Yeah, I'll take advantage of it, if I can, right? Hey, I ain't got money to tip, so.
And it's Friday and Saturday?
Uh, yes, sir. Yep, Friday and Saturday, 11:00 AM to, well, until we sell out. So maybe this Friday, Saturday, and hopefully every Friday, Saturday, coming after this. All right?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
If you give them to Laura and.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, counsel comments.
Larry? I was waiting.
John, do you want to go first?
Oh, okay, thank you.
There's a lot of baseball going on right now, a lot of Little League All-Stars going on right now, and I'd like to congratulate Fruitland Little League for qualifying to host the Maryland State Championship, which starts July 15th. They'll start three games that day, and that's a big event. That's for the majors, 11, 12-year-olds, and that's big for the, for Wacomiko County. So congratulations to Fruitland Little League.
Counselor Hall?
We did have an opportunity last week to meet with the governor. He was, he was very positive, he was in town, he was all over town. He made a number of appearances, and it was a pleasure to see him, and he sounded very positive for the Eastern Shore and also Wacomiko County.
Thank you. Counselor Joe, Hallway?
Yes, just wanted to say, got the chance to go out and wish Mrs. Schwartz from the Wacomiko County Nursing Home Well, County Executive, his staff is there, as well as myself, and she put in a lot of time and made that place as pleasant as it could be, I think, for folks that had to be there. Did get the chance to see the governor, that was uplifting. It was a nice event. And Willards had a great fireworks Monday night for the folks that got down there. I understand Salisbury had a good time, too, but I went down to Willards Monday night, so they did a real good job down there, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Davis?
I'd like to thank and commend Director Dallas for the road, Jersey Road completion. The road looks great, we got rid of that center lane, we even got bicycle lanes on there. So I'd like to thank you for your work out there.
Any other, any other counsel comments?
Have they got those signs up yet, Davis, for county council? I don't know. Under presidential comments, I would like to say we, we visited Allen, I know Mark Kilmer and I were in the parade, I know the executive was there as well, we had a great time, as we always do, for the Fourth of July parade in Allen. Really good time, a lot of people there, and it was a lot of fun. Also, attended the red, white, and boom fireworks at the stadium, and that was, that was a great time. That place was absolutely packed, people everywhere, it was a great show. I'd like to thank Mike Dunn and, and his people for all the hard work they did in putting that together. We had a really good time. And Hebron fireworks are tomorrow night, I believe, is that correct?
Tonight, tonight.
Is it tonight? Oh, it's right, I get my days mixed up, today is Wednesday. So Hebron fireworks are tonight, you've got about, no, you got, you have an hour and a half before.
We'll get this job over with.
The sooner I shut up, the, so. That being said, entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work session followed by closed session?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Means adjourn. First item on open work session is the Personnel Manual. I think we have Mr. Baker, Mr. Kramer, and Mrs. Morris.
Hope you all had a wonderful Independence Day celebration. People call it the Fourth of July, and it's the Fourth of July everywhere, but it's Independence Day in the United States of America, so that's right. That's a, that's a big distinction. At your request, we're here this evening to review with you, at least from an overview perspective, chapters six through nine, and if we're able to get through that much this evening.
Which page do we start?
I, I'm, I'm fully aware of the old adage that the mind can absorb only as much as the seat can endure, so we'll, we'll be as brief as we can, at the same time trying to address concerns or questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. You may be getting ready to say this, I was going to, counsel, now it's page 19, chapter five, right?
Sure.
Starts on page 19, it's page 20 with, in your PDF file, if you're filing it on your computer. Page 20. And again, thank you, I know, Mr. Baker, you and Mrs. Morris, you were on the prior committee, is that right, from 2014?
Yes.
So I'm just trying to refresh everybody with that, so we appreciate that, and of course, Mr. Kramer, you've been following on it for, for many years.
I was not a part of the work group in 2015. I, I only became involved at this level once we began to try to get something together that the, that the council could review.
Okay, we appreciate you all coming back to take your time to be a part of this. Thank you.
Chapter five is Salary Administration, which includes a schedule of classes and the full schedule of pay ranges and classification plan, as funded according to the annual budget.
Okay.
And you've just finished that process.
Okay.
Call your attention to 0504, the grades and pay ranges. You, you looked at that this evening with the two classifications that you have approved. This is introducing a piece of legislation. Anytime one of these positions changes or is created assures that the legislative process, which was done when this was adopted the last time, if something is created by legislation, it should be amended by legislation, and that hasn't always been the case in the past. We're recommending that you tighten that process up, and for the past year or so, I think that's been working better. There's a change in 0506 for work periods that also was done by council legislation involving employees of the Department of Corrections, removing them from the 28-day work period to the seven-day work period. This, this 05, well, we need, this was reviewed by the group before that legislation was passed, so we, we need to make some modification in 0506 language to, to respect that legislative change.
On 0502?
Yes, sir.
Where it's, the, the recommendations are being made to the executive, should that also be to the Director of Administration and the County Executive as well?
and the county executive as well? Since the Director of Administration is responsible, or since the department heads are responsible to the Director of Administration as well, would it hurt to include that, the Director of Administration there as well?
Well, I think you're referring to, to maybe more fully clarifying the chain of command.
Yes.
And if the council feels that there should be a, a, a scheduling or involvement by the Directors of Administration who would then seek the final approval of the executive.
Well, as long as they're, to recommend the amendments to both, I think then everybody's on the same page, and there can't be any, you know, it can always be known that everyone's involved, it's not requiring the approval of the Director of Administration, it's just stating that that's part of that entity. It could be a little dysfunctional if there, if there's a director that's talking to an executive and not to the Director of Administration.
If it pleases the council, as we began doing the last time we had a work session, when council members suggest clarifications or some additional, Mrs. Hurley can make note of that, and we'll bring that back to you at a time for your, for your further debate and discussion, is that all right?
Very good.
All right. Rather than go over all of this, is there anything that jumps out at you in, say, five oh two through five oh nine? There is a, there's a minor modification that needs to be clarified in oh five oh nine, where in the case, direct deposit of paychecks, there are some employees who do not have checking accounts, and this language will clarify, and there, and there needs to be a little modification of it, and we have that for your consideration when we get into the discussion. For employees that don't have a checking account, Department of Human Resources will provide a mechanism.
So the opt-out is what you included, or recommending the opt-out section? Because it does say there's an opt-out at the end of five oh nine.
Well, the, we're, we're actually recommending that that, that word itself is, is not needed, because if an employee just opts out, then there's, without providing an alternative, there is no way the employee will, will receive the payroll information because he or she doesn't have a checking account, and if he opts out of it, the county has to provide some other means of notifying the employees what, what their pay is and what their deductions have been, and we're going to give you language that will clarify that.
So, five oh nine is going to be rewritten?
Yes. And that, that sentence about employees may opt out of this requirement. If the employee does not have a personal bank account and informs the Department of Human Resources the employee wants to opt out, the Department of Finance will provide alternate means for receiving a paycheck, that's the language that'll be modified.
Okay.
And in five ten, rates of pay, following the points that council members made in our last work session, we offer for your consideration that within the, the language that's here applied to the executive branch, with an additional statement that salary levels for employees within the legislative branch shall be determined, determined by the county council, provided that it is sufficient within the funding of the budget.
Where would that be going?
That would be right at, right at a second, another sentence at the end.
Okay.
Of five, of five ten.
Five ten?
Oh, five ten, A.
A.
Under new employees.
Okay. Understand.
You established the distinction between legislative branch and the executive branch previously, this, this carries it out in another place where it might be appropriate.
Yeah.
Matt, on section five oh eight, are we adding electronic pay stubs to that?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Morris, I, I, I should have mentioned that. Everyone clear?
Electric pay stubs, like emails, electronic pay stubs?
Electronic, the employee self-service, so that the employee can go online and get their pay stubs.
Okay.
Rather than hard copy.
Okay.
As you probably recall, we haven't received a paper paycheck for, or a pay stub for quite some time.
Okay. Any questions?
Good, yes. There's a minor addition under, on page twenty-one, the first subsection B, special hires, we would add to that last sentence, and as provided for in the budget.
Okay.
And I don't have anything else that I see we showed concern about on the rest of page twenty-one. Page, page twenty-two, under subsection four, exceptions, that's exceptions to rates of pay, exceptions. We had quite a bit of discussion resulting from concern about equity, equitable treatment of employees in, in these situations where, and this is most likely the case in corrections, possibly some other departments, but corrections is a principal example, where we're talking about qualifying shifts and shift differential. Am I right here, the right page, yes?
What page are you on again?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Page twenty-two. Yeah, small, yeah, double I.
Okay.
Work from a qualifying shift to a non-qualifying shift. Now, this is a shift, a qualifying shift is a shift in which, it's a graveyard shift typically, where employees are eligible to receive a shift differential, a, a small hourly increase in pay for, for those hours worked. And the, under these exceptions, this says, work from a qualifying shift, that is, a shift for which the employee would receive a differential pay rate. To another qualifying, another qualifying shift, the shift differential will be paid for hours actually worked, and employees who work overtime from a qualifying shift into another qualifying shift, in addition to overtime payment for compensatory time to which the employee might be entitled. So that's, that's qualifying to qualifying, no argument there, no question, no concern. Under little two, double I rather, working from a qualified shift to a non-qualifying shift creates another concern. An employee has worked his or her entire shift under the, under the qualification of the, the shift differential quality, and for reasons of no control to the employee, there is not a replacement person, and the employee has to stay on shift and work into what is a non-qualifying shift. And the way this is written, the hours worked in a continuation of a qualifying shift beyond its normal hours to a non-qualifying shift do not qualify for payment of shift differential, and an employee is not entitled to shift differential for the hours worked in a non-qualifying shift. We think, at least, our, our recommendation is that you would consider removing that, just striking the not, so that it would say that an employee who worked as a continuation of a qualifying shift beyond its normal hours to a non-qualifying shift do receive the shift differential, because it is of, under no control of the employee that he or she has to work
Right.
as many hours in further. So the employee's already worked, say, all night, and has to work another hour or two or three or four, and, and we would invite your consideration of, of that language, and taking out, striking the last part of that sentence, which says, "And an employee is not qualified to shift differential for the hours worked in the non-qualifying shift." If we just simply changed "is entitled," it would be redundant to the language above. So we would suggest you write, strike it entirely. I don't know that there's a the language under promotions, there being two categories, and demotions, that's rather straightforward, if you don't have any issues, I won't belabor it. Which takes us then to chapter six, overtime and compensatory pay.
Not yet, it isn't.
Oh, okay.
On oh five twelve, recovery of unauthorized salary. I was wondering if there shouldn't be some type of time limitation, time, time restriction for a former employee?
That is, for recovery, that the county would be entitled to recovery?
Yeah.
I don't know what the statute, if there's a statute of limitations under such things or not, but if there is a statute of limitations, I would think that that would apply.
And, and I don't know what, under, again, I don't know under what authority where that statute of limitations might exist, whether it's state law or what it might be, but I think it should be considered as to whether or not there's a time, time restriction there.
So, consider statute of limitations.
Okay.
And if there is none, and you think it appropriate, if there is no statute of limitations on such a thing, and you still think that there should be a limitation of the county's recovery opportunity, then consider that.
Okay.
Anything else before we move to chapter six? Overtime and compensatory time, this is one that raised a considerable amount of concern among employees that you heard from in the, in the previous review of revisions of the Personnel Manual. And our efforts have tried to consider the concerns that were expressed. Oh, six oh one is self-explanatory, but it needs to be said. Department heads are expected to avoid unnecessary expenditures of overtime pay or compensatory time to suggest for foreseeable peak workloads, and then by doing certain things. We have to recall that within not too many of the past years, the county went through a terrible recession, and there were necessary stern measures taken to keep the county's budget balanced. There were furloughs, there were reduced hours, there were layoffs, and to some extent, we, well, we, we've fortunately passed through the worst part of the recession and are, are seeing light at the end of the tunnel, at least. But in many cases, positions that were, were vacated have still not been filled. And there are other reasons that employees left, and in cases, those positions have not all been filled either. And that's not entirely a reason, the reason for that is not entirely because the position wasn't necessary, the work is still there, and that brings me to the point of this section of the manual, in that while the work is still there and has to be done, it has to be done, in many cases, by fewer employees. That often may lead to the number of employees having to work more than standard hours. It's simply a matter that when that happens, the employee is entitled to compensation for that time worked. Now, the compensation is either cash or compensatory time, and for certain categories of county employees, compensatory time is the mechanism that has been utilized. Now, as we go to six oh, oh six oh two, compensatory time, rather than spending a lot of time on it, it's, the, the issue is that the granting of compensatory time is nearly a misnomer. It's, it's a misnomer because it's not something to be granted, it was earned. So it would be inappropriate for the county not to compensate employees for those extra hours worked, either by cash for non-exempt employees, or compensatory time, or in the case of department heads or exempt employees in hour-for-hour comp time. As I said, that was one of the areas of concern, issue, or, large responses from employees who were, who were concerned over that, and the, the document would clarify and maintain the policy of compensatory time when it has been properly utilized and properly authorized. That's always the case. It's not just a granting, it's, somebody doesn't just come in on Saturday and work, that has to be approved.
How was it, how did it come about, the total number of hours, the two hundred and forty hours for non-exempt and the four hundred and eighty hours for sworn law enforcement?
That, that's historic to the document, I think, isn't it, Sharon?
Except for the four eighty, that was changed later, but the two forty and the eighty. The eighty hours are, we did this in accordance to fair labor standards, but the eighty hours are a complement or a benefit to exempt employees. It does not have to be paid out, but it is a benefit to county employees who are exempt.
The reason I asked is because with the officers, it's four hundred and eighty hours, that's three months of comp time. It seems to me, I think, and it's no, no, this is nothing directed towards law enforcement whatsoever.
I, I think that's probably part of the negotiation, I, I'm not.
It is, okay, all right. That answers that.
That's, that's negotiated.
What's an example of an exempt employee getting compensatory time?
Some employees are exempted by professional positions, such as, there are some in finance who are exempt employees, and then an exempt employee is the supervisory level and above, so if that person is working a number of hours rather than overtime because they may have to be in the position, for instance, if it, and this is just an example, it doesn't have to be, but if it is a roads engineer, and that engineer is exempt, and then there's a snowstorm, and he puts in hour after hour after hour, the hours may be accumulated, and then it is up to the person who is above them, who is authorized the compensatory time as to whether or not.
So that would be extreme emergencies, et cetera, okay.
Now, now, the eighty that you mentioned is, is suggested here as a compromise, because there, that is, that's a new number, as I recall, the eighty. That's, that's a new number that would, would limit the amount of time that a, an exempt employee could accumulate hours.
It, it's actually not new in this document, because this is two thousand and three.
And it wasn't in two thousand and three.
And exempt employees, I believe, were included in there, I won't swear to it, but I don't believe that's.
I know the exempt employees were included in the two thousand and three document, but I'm, I'm talking about the eighty hours. Eighty hours was reduction, was reduced from, I don't remember offhand the, the number of hours, but that is in an effort to somewhat limit, or, yeah, limit's a good enough word, the, the liability to the county that employee, exempt employees would have to use their hours to keep, keep them below eighty, eighty hours. And that would, that would encourage, that would encourage the employees to take the time off.
I would think that there would be some stipulation similar to that in the two hundred and forty and the four eighty, at least in the two hundred and forty hours as well.
Well, the four eighty, the four eighty.
I understand, two forty.
Yeah.
The two forty, I would think that there should be some stipulation in the two forty.
That's, those, the, the two forties. That's, those, the 240 is an existing number. So if you want to consider modification of that, that's your problem.
On E, where it talks about unused compensatory time may be paid at any time, why would it be comp time if there's an allowance in here to pay them for that time?
Why would it be comp time? If it's earned beyond your 40 hours, then it's comp time, compensatory time for hours worked.
Exactly. But I mean, if you're giving someone comp time as opposed to overtime to begin with, why would you then turn around and pay them? It seems like, it seems...
Well, the difference between comp time, comp time is straight time. Overtime is time and a half.
Right.
Or double time, depending upon what it is.
No.
This is unused comp time. Well, it's comp time if you have earned, but you haven't paid.
Right, I understand that. And I can understand if it's an employee's...
Is your question, why would the county pay compensatory time or allow an employee to earn compensatory time versus paying them overtime?
No, I can understand why if an employee leaves and they're leaving, then you have to look at how you're going to pay them because they didn't use all their comp time. But if the employee is still working, why would you pay them? Why wouldn't you just insist on the comp time being used?
To keep that number from growing.
As is intended.
To keep that number from growing.
Which is the number of these to lessen the impact of an employee leaving and having a huge amount of compensation.
All at once.
All at once, so we try to reduce that.
Like a steam relief valve.
Right, I just, yeah.
That's the thought behind it.
Uh-huh.
We don't sit here and try to pretend that this is a perfect document. I don't know that there is such a thing of the Bible.
Yeah, I'm not being critical, I'm just curious and, you know, it just raised a question in my mind.
Good questions.
For, and John, for, and an example, an employee who has been in the county system for several years and, again, was a person who had furloughs instead of a time they could take off, and they've accumulated, for instance, 240 hours. If they are a higher-paid employee and they're paid out at one time, the department's budget also has to be, so that they can pay that time. And a lot of times, that may not be the case. If the department hasn't allowed for that kind of compensation, then they have to come back to council in order to have their budgets increased. So that's also considered in the compensatory payouts.
Okay.
And there are provisions in here as well, remembering that comp time is controlled by the department head or supervisors.
Before you leave that, in C, it also says that it's determined by the county and that needs to be clear when it says the county, who is that? It should either be the Director of Administration as a recommendation on the executive side, or the council administrator on the legislative side. But it should be more clear than saying the county because this was not done at the time when the branches were divided.
Okay, okay.
This has been somewhat of a moving target because we're working overtime. Not in that sense, over a period of time. Any other questions or concerns with this one? Ed or Sharon, please pull me out here. Oh-six, on page 25, beginning, wait a minute. F at the top of that page, third line, F in parentheses, lowercase f. Use of compensatory time, this follows on what we have been talking about. Employees should be permitted to use accrued compensatory time within a reasonable period after making a request, provided the requested use will not unduly disrupt the operations of the county or the affected department. And oh-six-oh-three, authority for overtime. If this breaks out, the pay for overtime work shall be approved in units of not less than 15 minutes. Now, we, you've heard us, you've heard us say that we would recommend outside, legal counsel review of some of these. This is, I think, one of them. That a 15-minute segment would be in compliance with FLSA requirements. Whether it's 15 minutes, attorneys, for example, and this is, this is just an illustration, does not apply here, but some attorneys bill on a six-minute schedule, some an eight, 10. I don't know of any that bill on a 15-minute schedule, though. So we don't know if FLSA would accept 15 minutes, that's a quarter hour. They may say it needs to be something smaller, we don't know that. But 15 minutes, I think, is the current, in the current language. It just needs to be checked.
Okay.
And no overtime or compensatory time shall be authorized unless specifically requested and approved by the department head. That's one of the measures of trying to contain overtime or compensatory time. Oh-six-oh-five provides that the county will notify employees with as much advance notice as possible if they were going to have to, if the employee's going to have to work extra hours. But it may not be possible to give very much advance notice. This simply says this in the document. So if an employee says, "Well, I wanted to pick my girlfriend out for supper tonight and now you have to work."
Your wife doesn't find out.
I know. I didn't notice, I didn't say "my." And provides for action if an employee refuses to work, and that's oh-six, oh-six-oh-six.
That's in line with fair labor standards, oh-six-oh-six?
I don't know, but I would think it is.
Okay.
Oh-six-oh-eight, multiple county jobs. This involved a little bit of head scratching, but we then recalled the circumstances which led to having provisions in the personnel manual for multiple county jobs. Regular full-time county employees shall normally be ineligible for selection to work a regular second county job. To be approved for a regular second county job, employees' department head must recommend this to the Department of Human Resources and human resources will forward the request to the Director of Administration for approval or denial. If selected for a county job, the following applies. Well, you can read that, there's nothing special there. But the circumstances that brought about the second county job occurred quite a number of years ago for the first time with the Youth and Civic Center. Some county finance department employees were actually recruited to work in some of the events at the Civic Center because personnel at the Civic Center knew that employees in the finance department could be trusted, quite frankly. So it didn't conflict with their regular work schedule because they worked nine to five. But an event at the Civic Center on a weekend or at night, that worked for, that worked for a while, worked well. And other county employees served as what we call greencoats. They were the ushers and that sort of thing. As I recall, there was a judgment against the county by the IRS that said we couldn't do it the way we were doing it and had to, we had to make provisions for these second county jobs. And that's the way that came about. And of course, it shows exceptions for occasional or sporadic work and law enforcers which fall under different, or law enforcement which falls under different rules altogether.
Okay.
I think the next couple of pages are pretty self-explanatory. There's a fairly new section in oh-six-thirteen, county executive declared emergency. That was worked out a few years ago and reflects in this, in this document as it was amended by council legislation. I'll call to your attention on page 29, after travel time at the top of the page, there's a, as travel time is B, there's a C that I think, I just noticed this tonight, actually, we didn't, we did not discuss it, I don't think. But says all other employees not deemed essential may be on administrative leave and paid accordingly. Paid accordingly is not very clear. And perhaps language needs to be added to be more specific about that.
Okay.
And, let's see, this provides, I don't think there's any change in holiday pay or how it's done or when it is or anything like that. The only thing that might be at least fairly recent is that for other county designated holiday, if an employee has to work on that designated holiday, they get to take another day off. And this provides that that other day taken off has to be within a year.
I have a request for a five-minute recess from a council member. Is that okay with council?
Sure.
Is that all right? I'm going to take a five-minute recess if we could.
If you, when we come back, if you want us to take a little higher-level view of this, I don't want to take your time if you don't need this level of detail.
I don't know, we appreciate it, but there's just, you know, a request been made so we're going to do that, just for five minutes.